This meeting of the Silver Falls School Board to order, and please note attendance Denise. Good to see so many faces tonight, welcome everybody. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a number of items on our consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded? Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. And I wanted to, um, there was an email question from a patron in the district and on, on some funding issues today. And, um, part of it, part of it, um, was relating to hires. And I just wanted to point out that all these hires, there's quite a few hires on the consent agenda. Those are, except for the kindergarten pieces, those are all replacement teachers for retirements. Those aren't new positions. So I just wanted to clarify that for anybody who is wondering. Those are, those are teachers who are retiring and, um, or resigning. And, um, those are just replacements for them. The kindergartens, kindergarten positions are due to the full day kindergarten coming on. So just a clarification on that. Okay, student reps. Elijah and Courtney.
Alright, I'm Elijah Nielsen, and here's your SHS Athletic School Board Report for the night. So baseball, the Foxes Boys Baseball Team is ranked 22nd overall in 5A. Also with a record of 10 and 13, their next game is this Tuesday versus Lebanon in Central Inn. Boys tennis, we are fourth in the league. Players are improving and representing SSS well by showing good sportsmanship, having superb court etiquette, and portraying a positive attitude. We will be heading the district May 13th, 14th, and 15th. Where there, we, there will be 12 players competing for a spot at state. Girls tennis, Ally Schmidt and Emma Anderson appear to have locked up third seed for districts. The top three seeds are so far above the rest of the teams in the league. Bearing an upset, they should qualify for state. Courtney Meisenheimer and Frank Pizziato appear to be the fifth best team in league. Top four from districts will go to state. When they played the fourth best team in the league, it went three sets before losing. If they can beat them at districts, will qualify to double teams. Softball, it's a privilege coaching Silverton Lady Foxes softball. We have had a lot of success in the last 15 years. We have one of the best programs in all 5A. We take pride in working with our student athletes. This year's team is no different, but still very different than any team I've coached. They take pride in competing at a high level. Getting to know this group has been rewarding in many ways. They are resilient, hardworking, and talented athletes. They do well in the classroom, and we have five 4.0 students. Whitney Ward, Deanna Allen, Maggie Buckholz, Megan Mannion, and Lindsay Orr, and some JV players. It takes dedication to do that, and I am proud of them. Some of our standouts this year for varsity are pitcher Alex Malloy for poison dedication, third base Megan Mannion for worth ethic and her selfless attitude, outfielder catcher Maggie Roth for athletic talent and good attitude. On JV, our standards are pitcher Gracie Bolton, a talented player and a good teammate, SS Vanessa Maraz, a quick talented athlete that goes all out, catcher Halsey Cotts, a gifted athlete that can flat out hit. As of right now, we are sitting on top of the Mid-Willemont League with a 12-3 record and a 12-8 overall. We are ranked at number eight as of today. Our JV program is looking good and has a 13-3 league record and an 18-3 overall. The future is looking bright for our program. I have to give credit for our success to our coaching staff. We have myself and JV coaches as paid staff, and we have four volunteers that have intricate roles in our program. Paul Smith, the ultimate ground scoreboard equipment guy you could ask for. Lee Courts Assistant Varsity Coach, works with outfielders and works first base. Felix Maraz Assistant Varsity Coach is a great encourager and dugout manager. Doctor Rod Orr Assistant JV Coach is selfless and gives girls positive instructions and helps with all aspects of our success. These people giving their time is valuable and can't thank them enough. We have four seniors, six juniors, seven sophomores, and nine freshmen in our program. We are building a family, and it takes a village to raise them. I want to thank all our volunteers, curriculum, and staff for all the support they have given us, given to us. Thank you from our family of the Lady Foxes softball. Respectfully, head coach Ralph Cortez, JV coach Mike Slagel. Track and field. The track and field season is wrapping up with our conference championships being held at Western Oregon University, May 13th and 14th. Silverton is hosting the JV districts meet Friday, May 8th. Several SHS athletes have produced times and marks that lead the league and even the state. The 4x200 meter relay team, a race ran just once a season at the Jesuit Twilight Relays broke a 30-year-old school record last Friday night. The members of the team are Colton Harley, Rock Rogers, Travis Sin, and Austin Haskett. The girls 4x100 meter and 4x400 meter relay teams led the league currently heading into districts. They both rank in the top 10 at the state level. Cheyenne Parlow leads the state in 5A division for shot put. Cheyenne is our current school record holder in that event. This is the first time in school history that we have had three boys in one season. And in this case, one meet cleared 12th in the pole vault. Lucas Wilson leads the league with a 13-foot vault. Spencer Hall's best value is 12 and 7, and Ian Rush has been over 12 and 8 twice in the last two meets. Other members with state's meet qualifying potential are Mattie Furman in the 100 and 3,000, Allison Riddling in both hurdle race, Megan Schreger in the discus and shot put, as well as several others. Qualifying for the state meet is determined by placing in the top two at our conference championships districts. Meet a qualifying standard in finals at districts, the OSAA determines these standards each season or produce a time of mark that is one of the next two best in all the state's conference championships. This has been a tremendous season thus far. We are excited to see how all of their work pays off at districts in which the 27 seniors, good luck, as they wrap up the final high school season and graduate this June. Golf. 2015 Silverton Foxes Boys Golf Team, Mid-Willemont Conference Regional semifinalists. Michael Kinsey, a senior, qualified for the state individual tournament in two weeks at Emerald Valley. Please come support him as he represents Silverton in the state tournament, May 18th and 19th. Thanks Troy Jokes, Silverton Head Golf Coach. Thank you.
So I'm Courtney Roth, and I have the clubs report for this month. So ASB, led by Johnny Farrell, held the Mr. SHS Pageant this month, raising over an astonishing and record-breaking $20,000 for Medical Teams International. A huge congratulations to Robbie La Park, this year's Mr. SHS, and to all of the boys who worked so hard to raise that money. ASB is currently planning spring week and the spirit games, which will be held May 25th through the 29th. FBLA, led by Trish Conlon, competed in the state business leadership conference in Portland on April 9th through the 11th. The Silverton FBLA chapter won the 5A chapter of the year award, as well as an award for the second largest membership in the state out of all schools. Also, Silverton was very well represented by 12 individual state placers. As a result of this state performance, we will have nine students attending the National Leadership Conference in Chicago this summer. The National Honor Society, run by Chrissy Arnall, will be helping with the senior awards night this spring. Also, prospective sophomores and juniors will begin meeting and applying to be initiated into the club next year. FFA, run by Scott Towery and Sarah MacArthur, recently competed in the state competition for career development events. Our dairy foods team, consisting of four students, placed first at state and will be representing Oregon at nationals this fall. Our ag mechanics team placed second at state, and our agronomy team took third. Overall, Silverton FFA did a fantastic job at the state competition, and that is all I have for clubs.
Great. Any questions for these guys tonight? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
One more report for you guys. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to audience with visitors. As always, try to keep, you know, anyone can come up and speak in front of the board, try to keep your comments to five minutes or under. If you're here with a group, I'd ask that you kind of consolidate your ideas and have one or two people come up and talk. And just one other thing, I got, I got comments from a few community members after the last meeting about kind of the tone that audience with visitors has taken sometimes in the last few meetings. And I realize we're dealing with a lot of some controversial issues, some issues where there's lots of different opinions out there, and we welcome people bringing your opinions to us. That's one reason we're here, is to hear, hear from community members and hear opinions. I would just ask that as you do that, we keep, keep your comments, respect, give us your comments respectfully, and no name call in, some, just, you know, just, just try to keep it a little bit respectful. So some community members have told me that they get the feeling that isn't always happening lately. So just a side note, but we welcome your comments. We have a couple people on the agenda to start out with. Dell Turner, Garland Industries. Is Dell here? Hi Dell.
I want to thank the board for giving me an opportunity to speak to you. I was privy to the information that was bandied about at the last school board meeting, and I wanted to make myself available to the board in order for clarification and explanation. So please feel free during my dissertation to ask me any questions as I go on. So if I'm not clear, then you can give clarification for me. The other thing too is, I've sat on the school board, I've sat up in Estacada, so I understand what and empathize what you guys have to go through. You have to understand and appreciate the information that is presented to you by the public, but sometimes that's not always the truth or the full story on to that. So hopefully I can clarify some of the accusations. The Garland, I worked for the Garland Company for 27 years, along with 300 other employee owners. So I'm a part owner of the company. We were founded in 1895, and we are over a $350 million company. Some of my customers are the federal, in the federal market are the Department of Engineers, GSA, BLM, the Lawville Power Administration, the US Forest Service, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Navy, Air Force. I also worked for the state, I worked for the Department of Transportation, the DOC, the Department of Military. I was involved in the state hospital construction at both locations. I worked for over 10 cities, four counties, four universities, four community colleges, and over 20 districts. Two of the districts, one in Malala, I've been doing business with them for 20 years, and the other one in state, and I've been helping them for the last 15 years. We have manufacturing facilities in California, Arizona, New Mexico, Arkansas, Alabama, Georgia, North Carolina, and we are based in Cleveland, Ohio. So some of the information that stuff is coming out of Cleveland is incorrect as it was presented to you. As far as my relationship with Joel Smallwood, it started in 2007 when I met him at an ASMA program. You guys are familiar with ASMA, it's the Oregon School of Maintenance Facilities Organization in which Joel is the president. And Joel had expressed to me that he had some major issues with roofing problems that were both eminent from the manufacturer as well as the installer. And he was looking for a standard to put together to ensure that the district was getting what they were asking for and was, was getting the long-term performance of the roofing that he desired in order to meet the budget requirements that Kuzbey had. So that's where I met him. So Joel had an idea for standards, and he wanted to set forth some standards. And so I worked with him on some of the basic ideas in the industry as far as standards for manufacturers are concerned, and he had his own ideas, and he put together a package for standards that Kuzbey was going to use as far as roofing manufacturers and suppliers, which he had a great deal of success, so much so that the other districts down there in North Bend and Kokil embraced and are following the same methodology. As you guys know, sitting on a board, you guys have standards for everything. You have standards for the, the education process of it, you have standards for your administration, you have standards for your certified, you have standards for curriculum, you have standards for books. I mean, I can go on, there's tons of standards. But the one thing that most districts don't have is they don't have standards for the most expensive physical asset they own, their buildings. And so what we did and what Joel did is he established a standard, a minimum standard, for what he wanted on his buildings. And for those last seven years we worked down in Kuzbey, we had a great deal of success. So with that information, Joel took those specifications that were drafted down there. And let me clarify as far as the specifications are concerned. They were initially developed by the Construction Specifiers Institute, which is a conglomerate of architects and engineers that came together and made standards on all types of building, whether it was from the footings to windows to doors. And the division that we work in is called Division 7, it has to do with waterproofing. So with that particular information, we provided that, that is the basic boilerplate from there. So Joel had those. As far as the metal portion of the specification that he is using on this project, that came from... Excuse me?
Got a minute left?
A minute left. That came from the Corps of Engineers, okay? So the idea and the letter that he received from Taylor, I didn't write the specifications. Those were drafted completely by Joel Smallwood. So for them to say that that wasn't true at all, okay? The other thing that we presented and that Joel had in his bid package was a methodology for any manufacturer, any manufacturer to submit. And I'll present that with you before I leave. And the other thing that was told was that we charge for warranty. We've already done projects, if you guys didn't know, we did a project with you guys last year. We didn't have any particular issues with that at all. You guys have copies of our warranties on file, which are 30-year NDL. So all these accusations that were formulated in this letter are salacious at best. And I wanted to come here for the minutes that I have to let you know that anyone can sit in front of you and can make accusations, especially when someone's not in the back to say, wait a minute, that's not true. And you hired Joel Smallwood, who has over 12 years of experience, to understand this process. And I've been vetted, and all we did was we asked other manufacturers to be vetted in the same manner. And some chose not to and decided to go around the system and come directly to the board. And if you listen to, and I listened to the recordings, that they didn't go to the bid walk, they didn't know, they didn't know the basic public bidding specifications, and they didn't know that they could protest. So there's a litany of things here that should throw up red flag. And they got an opportunity to sit in front of you and make accusations false and incorrect about our company. So that's why I wanted to sit down here and say, there's my piece. So does anyone have a question for? Any question?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, no, no, please, um, you know, I read the letter and thought sour grapes. Then I went on the internet and used, and Googled you guys. And I, and I didn't like what I read from some pretty, from some pretty reputable sources. This isn't someone with an axe to grind, this is, you know, links to San Francisco and all over the place. And can you, can you explain how, how someone like me who doesn't know anything about it, and I read a pretty good, well-written article, I go, wow.
What I would first off recommend you to do is go on Nexus Lexus and do a search there, okay? Because that's actually, you'll get to the truth. We have, we had an issue with a young lady who happens to have a great deal of money that decided to grind an axe with us. She was dismissed from a job and she blamed it on Garland. And then she sends salacious articles about this that are unfounded. But it finds that when you're on the internet, you can't sue everybody, you can't chase everybody. And I believe you have an attorney on your board, and he will tell you that you have to lose money in order to win a libel suit. So we won't pursue it. So what we do instead is come in front of everybody, you get to see a tangible owner of the company, and we speak to these, these issues. Yeah, we see them all the time, alright? We have not been thrown out of any state, alright? We don't have any lawsuits or a pending on the west coast, alright? We have not, we can bid on any public project anywhere in the United States. So all that stuff is untrue. I'm sure I could take everybody's name on the board and go online and find that you have a counterpart somewhere else that maybe have broken the law or have done something to you. So to sit there and use the internet as a basis of truth, you guys are kind of walking down the way. So we would recommend you do a Nexus Lexus search on us, and you'll find, and I'll provide the board with the link, and you'll find that you don't have, you don't have any particular issues with Garland, okay? And you definitely don't have any issues with me, alright? I do work, like I said, up the coast, down. I've been the one that's come to districts. Last one I did, and, and I don't mean to talk fast and curt, I'm just...
We understand.
Well, I made the mistake of watching that show before I came here, alright? Lincoln City built the Taff High School. It was a disaster from the start, alright? The roofing manufacturer left, the installer left, the architect didn't take any blame, and that building leaked from day one. And we came in under a great deal of pressure, political pressure, and we fixed it, and we took full responsibility for it. 90% of my customers, especially in the public market, especially in the educational market, have been burned, have been burned because they did not set a policy, they did not set standards, they let people write a salacious article like this and then claim it's true. None of this is true. I don't write the specs, I don't run the project, alright? I mean, we don't charge $5,000 to do an inspection. I have a copy of my warranty right here, alright? And what we ask, what we ask of the, of the contractors, I'll provide it for you right here, is for them to be, not the contractors, but the manufacturers who wants to substitute, they have to be physically, financially sound. They just got to get a letter from a, from their owner saying that where they want to put the material is going to meet all the criteria of their warranty. I'll provide this for you. This is the same stuff that you'd want your kid to be watched by. And then for someone to sit up here and say, oh, we didn't get, we don't get a fair share. Well, you don't make a product that is worthy of the application and where it's going to be put. And to make these comments that I wrote the specification are ridiculous. You hired Joel Smallwood for a reason. He's very reputable. He went through a vetting process, didn't he? Alright? I drive a car, everyone here drives a car, right? Do you know how, just because you drive a car doesn't mean you know. He has experience in this marketplace for a long period of time. And for someone to stand up here and write sour grapes and then say these are the truth, and then be brought along with information that was false, is ridiculous. So I don't mean to get, I don't mean to chastise anybody, and I apologize for that because I'm not in a position. But I've sat on the board where people would bring up the most crazy stuff ever. I mean, you guys probably get it, right? And we had a bad five in Estacada, it was unbelievable. I didn't realize what a rotten person I was until I became a board member. So, you know, so you, we did a vetting process, alright? And the reason why no one came is your jobs are small. Those aren't very good jobs, alright? Portland's going to do seven schools, not some small building off of Victor Point or some tiny little section over at Mark Twain, or coat a roof so you guys can get an additional 15 years instead of re-roofing it. So there was a lot of things that were involved. And then for someone to write that I didn't want to come to the job lot, how in the hell do you bid a job unless you go to the job? It's like, I can fix your car, we haven't opened a hood, how do you know? So I mean, the more you read this, and the more you, you look at it, at least in my standpoint was, it really, I wonder that Joel hasn't gotten really upset about it, because he's done his job, alright? And, and if you want my, if you want my references, I'll give them to you. I just finished, I'm just finishing down at state, I handled all the roofing for their bond, alright? I've done, I've been up there for 20 years, okay? The reason why I was invited into the district was because of Joel, because of the success that we had had, alright? Because essentially, this doesn't protect me, this protects you. This does, this document, this makes sure that the school gets what they're after. There was a comment made by a gentleman that he was worried about Garland's financials, alright? Well, we asked for them in here, they're presented in here, alright? So all that particular information is made readily available.
Could you wrap it up Dell?
I'm done.
Okay, any other questions?
Anything else?
Anything else?
Yeah, I got a question. I was never, I was never alarmed, I mean, I read the letter and I thought sour grapes. I just set it aside. It was, what, what has bothered me is, is the fact that it seems to be such a tight spec that no one can break you, the spec.
No, it's actually not a tight spec at all.
How often, you know, we visited with...
I just got hit.
No, 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 when we visited with Joel, you know, no one had ever broken the spec.
Not for Joel.
Right, I agree, that's all we had.
No one, well, trust me, not too many people go to Kuzbey looking for work.
Yeah, I know, I know. But does, you know, does it give you, can you see how someone like me, you know, I want, I feel that competition is, is good, and we have in this process good competition on the, on the applicators, but not what in my opinion, strong opinion, on the material. And it seems like a pretty tight spec. And, and it does, and I'm quite confident that, you know, you're helping him crafting the spec and doing all this, and walking the job of four gives you, your company a competitive advantage. And that's...
Well, any manufacturer can do the same thing I do.
And I think it's wrong, to be honest with you. I think it's wrong.
So the crazy thing is, why would you bid something unless you know it's going to work? And the other thing that you have to understand as far as warranties is predicated on the building codes. So someone could put a roof on a building that doesn't meet building codes, and guess what? You guys don't have. You don't have a warranty.
Yeah, no, I share, I share your goals, I trust me.
So the only thing that, no, we opened it up, we didn't list it, we made a basis of design, and then we opened it up to anybody, okay? And anybody can bid that job. And in fact, the installers that I had could have chose to use a different particular product on this, but they had success with us, they like, we have a good working relationship with them, and so they decided to stay with us. But we did not, it's not a closed spec. It's not a proprietary spec, because we don't make anything that anybody else doesn't make, alright? And one thing that you have to understand is a warranty is a voluntary item, alright? We feel comfortable and confident that our product's going to last for 30-plus years, so therefore we warranty. People who can't warranty for 30 years, there's a reason why they can't, because their products aren't going to last that long. So it's a voluntary action, but there isn't anything in the products in which we make that are proprietary. Nothing, alright? And the other thing that we do is we invest a lot of time on making sure it goes down. And a lot of manufacturers don't want to. They don't want to inspect on a day, a weekly basis. They don't want to write a report, they don't want to. But this is part of the standards. I want to teach, right? I don't have a master's degree. Should I get a job as a teacher? No, you have standards, alright? And, and that's all we said. So that spec is not closed. It is wide open. If you want to bid it, it's real simple. You do this. And the only thing that we asked for, and I remember there was a complaint, we asked for a third party to come in and look what you have and stamp it, alright? So you don't have something like this, alright? This is inhumane.
No, no, I don't.
Okay. So all we're asking for is somebody to look at what you have to present and make sure that Joel doesn't have to go through the minutia trying to determine whether this meets that. You have, you have an engineer says, yes, it does, and stamp it, and it opens up to anybody. I do a ton of state work, I do. I know how the process works, alright? We exclude, we want the manufacturer to be intricately involved in the application, alright? If I make something that's good, then regardless of how it's installed, it better be good. And I better be responsible for not only designing it, but installing it and providing it. And that closes a loophole, because too many times, you guys have to take low bids in a bidding process, and you never, hardly ever sue to enforce a warranty, and you get what you pay for. I mean, I know there are things going on in this district, not necessarily with roofing, that you're finding yourself in that particular position. So it's not just indicative of roofing, it has to do with the construction industry. So what, all Joel did and all we did down at Kuzbey is we closed the, we closed the loop.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. I mean, I truly do. I want, I want the same type of roof. I just, I just have my problem with the process.
Tom, anyone can do it, alright? It's just, it's whether they choose to or not. And the other thing is, you have, those are small projects.
Oh, I know.
People didn't, people weren't caring about it.
Oh, yes. I agree. Yeah, no, I...
I'm doing a project down in Kokil, it's a $2 million project, alright? Because they went through, they, they got burned horribly bad. And they, and they're a tiny district, and they don't have the money, and they decided to go this route, and it was because of the success Joel had up in Kuzbey.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Tim.
No, that's fine.
No, 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 we've been talking about him for the past two meetings, he's been all the time he wants.
I'm going to leave this warranty with you to show you that there's no such thing as some mystical inspections that cost $5,000. That can easily end up on the internet, that could. And then people could say, oh, Garland charges $5,000 for... So when you look at the internet, and I will get this stuff to the board or to Joel, that we get a lot, we are successful, we have a great deal of responsibility. We make other people do what we do, and they don't go to, and that causes... We make other people do what we do, and they don't do it, and that causes a great deal of enemies. And we have a lot of them. But the one thing we don't have, we, and you won't find in this state, you won't find a school district that works with me that won't say anything but good things about Garland. So, alright?
Okay. Other questions?
Thank you, Del.
Okay. Thank you, Del.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, next up, WC A, Chapter 148, Food Services.
Good evening, board members of the Silver Falls School District. My name is Ross Bryant, Assistant Cook at Ross Elementary.
Excuse me, Ross? Could you pull the microphone a little closer to you?
Yes.
Thanks.
Sorry, yeah. In October of last year, we were informed the district was seeking a food service management company to assist with our meal counts. And in preparations, Sodexo was selected for the job. We were told that there would not be too many changes, which was not the case. And we were told that our lunch menu would stay the same for most of the time, with maybe a few new items added. That was, however, not the case. And within the first month of starting this new program, Robert Frost lost a count of 589 meals within that first month. And with even the lower meal count, our workload increased, and my supervisor can no longer take a lunch break due to the fact because she has to make two more items per day. And we've asked for more hours to help with preparations, and we have been denied that. And we are asking to keep it local and to give us a trial period of one semester to where we can decide what we want on our menus and to see what our students like. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jo Lundquist. I have a daughter who attends Silverton High. I have had the pleasure of working for Silver Falls School District for 16 years in food service. We have always taken such pride in bringing to our children a well-balanced nutritious meal for daily breakfast, lunch of the following guidelines provided by the ODE and National School Lunch Program, including an opportunity to introduce to our children a wide variety of fresh fruits and vegetables on our salad bar. We used to have snap peas, jicama, melons, kiwi, radishes, grapes, peaches, nectarines, all went in season, using fresh leaf lettuce with kale. Some of these items were new to our children. What a wonderful experience for them. As of March, this has all changed. Sodexo, a multi-billion dollar industry, was introduced. We are no longer able to provide this for our children on the salad bar. It is extremely limited to baked lettuce, carrots, broccoli, cauliflower, cucumbers, and tomatoes. Fresh fruits are limited to bananas, apples, and oranges. We were advised that this is a franchise business, which we all know, large quantity, less quality, at the consumer's expense. Is this really what we want for our children? As our small farm town came down to the almighty dollar and not the child, is this really cost savings? At what price? We are asking the school board to truly look into those recent changes to our school lunch program. In addition, we would love the opportunity to further review recent changes since our time is limited tonight. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Annie Albright. I have worked for Silver Falls School District in food service for 16 years. It's always been at the high school. So, I've seen participation go up. I've seen it go down. Right now, to me, it seems like it's down, but the lunch counts are definitely up. And the reasons, I feel, the reason is, we have the kids come through who cannot buy à la carte anymore. So, when they come through and wanna buy a piece of pizza, we have a bucket of fruit, we stick an apple on their tray, and we charge them lunch. Then we have a kid who'll come through and buy a lunch, but he wants an extra piece of pizza, and again, put an apple on his tray, and we charge him for two lunches. To me, it just seems awfully deceiving to the kids and to their parents, and it just seems like it's all about the money. It's not about the kids anymore. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Rosenberg. I have worked for Silver Falls School District since 2009. I believe Silverton cares deeply about our children, and our district has always reflected this. Unfortunately, this worldwide corporation does not share these same priorities. Last week, we served french fries four out of the five days, and also telling the children that these are vegetables. I thought that our district was striving for wellness, but what is this teaching our kids? I do not believe that they have the students' best interest at heart. I realize we are in a budget crisis, but we have had to hire an assistant at Mark Twain along with increasing hours. I have also been told that we will eventually be doing everything onsite, which is something I would enjoy. I left a classroom position because I do enjoy cooking. But this moves us from an assistant level to a lead cook position. I'm currently only one item away from this step as it is. I don't see how doing this can help our budget. I've lived in Silverton all of my life, and I feel fortunate that I can send both of my children to school here. I believe Silver Falls School District is truly one of the best. Any questions?
Questions for these guys? Thank you for coming. You bring up some good concerns. And I just wanted, wanna say for you guys and for everybody else, we're gonna be hearing a full report on food services and that, you know, the contract with Sodexo and some of the goals we set when we entered into the contract with them, we're gonna be hearing a full report on that next Monday night at our work session. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. But thank you for your information.
Thank you very much.
And a lot of it's driven by federal guidelines, federal mandates now too, so... Okay, would anyone else like to address the board tonight? I failed to say, when you come up, please sign in, sign your name, address. You guys are fine, but please sign in and then give us your name, introduce yourself.
I'll put my address in a minute. I've never been to a board meeting before, but...
Could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Stephanie Collins. I have a student at the high school. And issue, I had no idea that you guys were doing food changes. And I noticed my daughter coming home frequently over the last month and a half just with wild things that are happening in the lunch cafeteria. Food quality's gone down. It's disgusting. She, there's the pizza, which my daughter loves pizza, is pretty much inedible. I'm paying more out of my pocket. I pay for my child's food. And when I hear that food is being doubled, like she said, that if they try to go through and get seconds, they have to get another fruit. They get billed for a second meal because the first meal that they got isn't big enough. We weren't told of price changes. Prices have gone up. What she used to pay 50 cents for on a Tuesday, she comes in on Wednesday, and it's now $1.25, but the food hasn't changed. Like I said, we met with a few people at the park that were also concerned. I put a post on Facebook saying, "Hey, what's going on?" Like I said, I had no idea that there was a food change done. All I knew is on the consumer end, that the quality of my daughter's food went in the toilet. So, then I hear all about the Sodexo, and alarm bells go off. I don't know if anybody, before they approved Sodexo, even did any research on this company. So, my concern is supportive of staff that if I was unaware that these changes were being made as a parent, but yet I'm seeing results that are less than, subpar, that obviously something is wrong. And I'm seeing that the contract should be up June 15th with Sodexo, as it was an interim thing. I strongly suggest, as a parent, I've talked to multiple other parents, and they said, "Yeah, we noticed this horrible change with the quality of our kids' food." So, it's not just me. And I suggest that you guys look at alternatives. And I also am under the understanding that Sodexo was the only person that came to bid on that? For, I'm not sure exactly how all that works, but you guys wanted to, you know, get a contractor and help with food. They were the only person, and that goes back to the roofing thing. If there's only one choice to choose from, it kind of straps your hands. And I think that there are better alternatives. Some of his parents have found some. Ashland has a great food program. We have a lot of local farmers in the area. They could provide the quality of food that we need and our children deserve. So, I mean, do you guys have any questions?
Questions for Stephanie?
Yeah, when you, like Ashland, do they subsidize, and this better food program, do they subsidize it, or is it within the budget? Do they, do they throw any more, any extra money into the pot? Are the prices higher?
No, they're not higher. I looked at the prices. The prices are actually cheaper than Sodexo. They use a lot of fresh produce, and they have an excellent, that was one other problem that I had. I went on Silver Falls School District, and this isn't an issue that's new to me. Trying to find nutritional values six years ago was impossible. And I know multiple parents that have children with like type 1 diabetes or food allergies and things like that. And when you guys did not have any of that information available, like nutritional information, that to me told me that this was an area that needed work on. I tried to work about, like I said, about five years ago with the school nurse, Sue Ellenida, and that just turned into a big joke. I couldn't get any nutritional information on the food. So, I think there's a little overhaul that needs to be done with you guys' food program. But in regards to, back to what you were saying, Ashland, they had all that information on their homepage for the school district. It was one of the top things you can click on. They use a lot of local farmers. They do get subs, have subsidies from the federal government. And I am aware that there are new policy changes for the no child left behind. Do you, here's another ironic thing with that. Like, one, two, three, three or four parents have told me their kids went hungry for a week and a half due to these changes. They were told they could not have food because they either didn't have enough in their account or, God, there's other issues. Some kid brought a peanut butter and jelly sandwich to school for a week and a half because the mom's on a budget. They were told, and this was at Eugene Fields, that they were not allowed to have this peanut butter and jelly sandwich. They threw it in the trash and did not give the kid an alternative because of food allergies that other kids could have.
That's a, that's a different issue. Could you wrap up your comments, please?
Yeah. So, anyway, my point is, I think that it's something you guys really seriously should look at before you guys lock in with a one-year or four-year contract with Sodexo, because like they were saying, when you franchise out like that, this company is a multi-billion dollars. They do not care about our kids in this community. We do. They're our kids. If you wouldn't feed it to your kid at home, then why should we let him eat it at school? You know, I mean, let's, hey, let's go to Sodexo and have dinner. I mean, it ain't gonna happen. So, I suggest we look at alternatives. And Ashland, I think, should be really looked at to mimic their program, and it would take less resources for us to do so, because somebody else has already done the work.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Anyone else? Yeah.
I'm Russ Davis with Arrow Roofing and Sheet Metal.
Please sign in.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Russ Davis, and I represent Arrow Roofing and Sheet Metal.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Good evening. My name is Russ Davis, and I represent Arrow Roofing and Sheet Metal. I've been with Arrow Roofing and Sheet Metal for about one year, and I've been in the commercial roofing industry for about 24 years. On February 12th, Arrow Roofing was notified that they were the apparent low bidder on four Silverton School District roofing projects. On February 27th, Arrow Roofing received an intent-to-award email from the school district for the roofing projects. Last week, I received a copy of the letter sent to the school board dated March 4th, 2015, from Taylor Metals. It is important to me to make the board aware of the misinformation and false statements the letter contains. According to Dunn and Bradstreet, Taylor Metals has been in business manufacturing since 2007, and Garland has been in business for well over 100 years. In my professional experiences, I've sold and installed both Garland and Taylor Metal roof systems. However, I have never installed a Taylor Metal roof system in an institutional application where bully rates apply. Historically, Taylor Metal roof systems installed can cost anywhere from $9 to $11 per square foot. This does not take into consideration paying crews prevailing wages, so the claim of any savings is a misnomer. Second, I have been involved with the installation of Garland roof systems for over 15 years. I have never heard of Garland charging their customers for warranties or inspections. This statement is categorically false. In closing, Arrow Roofing has followed all the rules set forth by the state by bidding a legal thorough specification. Knowing our legal rights, Arrow Roofing will exercise them. If we are denied this contract due to such dubious letter written by Taylor Metals, I'd like to thank the board for your time. You guys have any questions?
Any questions for Russ? Okay, thank you, Russ.
I appreciate the time to pick up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Once again, thank you all for coming.
Good evening, board. I'm Ron Duda. I'm coming here as a parent.
Pull the mic a little closer, please.
Sorry. Coming here as an employee and a classified chapter president. I'm here to talk about Sodexo. I don't think it's a, it's the best option for the district having them manage their food service. I know the lunch count numbers are up at the high school. The reason for that is because à la carte is now being sold as a lunch. That only proves that the lunch counts are up, but that doesn't mean that participation is up. I would recommend that the board to contact Oregon Trail School District and Dallas School District. Those are school districts that, back in 2013, 2014, had Sodexo currently managing their program, but they went back to in-house again. It would give you a different perspective on why a school district similar in our size would go back to manage it in-house after having Sodexo managing their food service for them. And actually, Oregon Trail was the same situation where we are, where they just had, they had their own employees, but Sodexo was managing them. I would ask the school board to give the food service in the district another chance. I know there needs to be some changes to be in compliance, but with some training, I think it can be done. Let's give the students the quality and variety that they are paying for, and let's keep it local. Any questions?
Questions for Ron? Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
I'm Marsha Kramer. And I just kind of wanna touch to on the food service a bit. You've heard a lot. It's a lot to take in. Lot of testimony, lot of information, and there's probably more to come, because there's a lot of cooks out there. You've got cooks that have been working a year, all the way to 28 years for this district. Some of these women are going home in tears. They are so overwhelmed, so frustrated. They don't feel like they're supported, and it's very hard for some of them. It seems wrong to me. I've been in the district working special ed for, it'll be 17 years. And it's hard to go home when you feel overwhelmed, and I've been there. I know that. You know, it seems like the cooks weren't given a chance to try something. I think their suggestion is, "Give us a semester. Give us a semester. See if in a semester, we can do something different with the food service." You know, "Give us some time." Some things that have not been said, and they, somebody else may speak, I don't know, but there's quite a bit of waste that's happening. And there's waste in food service regardless. That's gonna happen. But, for instance, at Robert Frost, they deliver produce on Friday for the following week. So, I know, I've talked to the cooks there. They're throwing stuff away before it ever gets to the salad bar, before it ever gets to the kids. So, that's not so good. At Mark Twain, bread was delivered, all their bread products were delivered the Thursday before spring break. There's no school Friday. There's no school Friday, no school for the week. Guess where all that went? It all molded. So, you know, the kids, they're given the apple, they're given what they're supposed to. And what about composting? I don't know. Is that an option? Could the schools do a compost system? Because there's a lot of stuff that goes with, Mark Twain or Robert Frost has a garden. Compost could go to the garden. That might be something to consider. So anyway, I just, you know, I don't know how they were chosen. I don't know that process. I don't need to know. But, you know, it needs to be looked at as far as, you know, are we looking at dollars and cents or are we looking at common sense? Are we looking at what's best for the kids or are we looking at what's best for the district? You know, I mean, the district or the kids, the whole bit, and taxpayers' money, too. So, anyway, I think as you're choosing this in June, you know, I agree, look into maybe some other companies or something, but listen to the cooks. They've been working hard. 28 years is a long time to be cooking food at the high school, because I was there then, you know? So, right, Earth?
I wasn't.
Right, right. So anyway, just give it a thought and listen to your cooks because they have a heart for kids and they wanna do what's best.
Thank you, Marsha. Anyone else? Okay, we'll, oh, Jean's coming.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, see, I don't wanna drift off what my main topic would be, but I wanna comment on the roofing. I haven't said anything about the specs or this. I mean, I've had some private conversation, but I'm not beating on those drums. But I do wanna comment, I don't think it's fair that the comment should be made tonight that the other people's roofing don't stand up to 30 years. I think they do. B&amp;D Roofing produces the same or had, I don't know if they're in business anymore, but the one that's been contesting this, they've got the same profile. The issue is what kind of finish they have on the product. I've got a metal roof on my shop that's been there 22 years, and it's from B&amp;B, B&amp;D, and it's just fine. Now, there was a case on the roofing, I was wrong last time, up at Victor Point, apparently something that was gonna be done about eight months ago did not get done. But at the time, I noticed that the cost was over twice of what I thought it should be when I talked to one of the board members, and the question was raised in more than one bid obtained, and yes, it had been. So I really questioned when we're dealing with prevailing wage, what the costs are, if we're spending too much money, and that's where I'm going with what I wanna talk about. So you received an email from me where I questioned that we should be spending this money right now. We've got a real problem with our general fund because of income. We have more problems that are coming up because of the PERS issue. We are discussing tonight a bid or contract with someone for, what, about $38,000 to demo the ag shop, when I don't think that we've received a report yet back from the architect or a budget as to what is comparably correct.
We actually did it our last work session. The architect gave us a report on the ag building, ag shop that he had looked into. It was $600,000 to a million to redo that building. That didn't include the roof, so.
Tim, if you remember, I was at that meeting, and he said they have more information to gather. It wasn't conclusive. It was a guesstimate. So you haven't not received that report, and you have not received a list of potpourri items about what needs to be done at Slater. I, in the last several times you've seen me here, I haven't been beating on you about Eugene Field School at all. I've been talking about where you're going with this. Do you have enough money? You don't know you have enough money. You're now proposing to tear this building down, which can have seven classrooms in it, all interior hallways, interior restrooms, much better than modules. And to tell you no for a fact that this is going to work or what the cost is gonna be, we shouldn't be spending $400,000 for roofs and wasting another $400,000 or $600,000 on tearing a building down when we don't know. We've got some real responsibilities coming up, and I don't think it's appropriate that this board pass the buck to the next board that comes on and say, well, this is what we thought we should do, and then they have to fight to find out where they're gonna get the funds for. What is the main purpose of Silver Falls School District? Education. So that's my question. I hope you think about that when you've got these items tonight.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. Full-day kindergarten at Eugene Field, movement of third graders to Robert Frost School beginning in the 2015-16 school year. Andy and Linda?
Each of you received a copy of latest information about the proposal to move third-grade students from Eugene Field to Robert Frost School beginning this August. So just to recapture it for the benefit of the public and others, we've, for the last couple of months, a few months, have been considering options. Had an option recommended to you last month that I think after additional thought and additional consideration, and I think credit to the process itself, determined that it wasn't the most appropriate option for the school district when it came to providing room for kindergarten students at Eugene Field School. The other piece that says a reminder is, you have a need. You have a need to find enough room at Eugene Field School for kindergarten, and we have been discussing the impending need for sufficient room for full-day kindergarten, literally for the last three years. And it was part of two bond attempts which failed, and so this conversation continues. And so now you're in a unique position where you need to find a solution. And so I come to you tonight with additional information that I asked my staff to dig into and find for me related to concerns that I had specific to moving all of the third-grade students from Eugene Field to Robert Frost School. It really came down to two items. One of those was the impact, the potential impact of summer move-ins, because sometimes summer move-ins are unpredictable. And the other piece was the coordination of efforts to transition students from second grade to Robert Frost, current second graders to Robert Frost, as third graders next year at a time where it's incredibly busy in this district, and we have a lot going on with a variety of things. They came to me with some helpful information, and I think it helps to close this loop related to what we can do and to firm up this proposal. So I'm here to share that with you this evening. I'm gonna go over that with you if you brought a copy with you, but it's, first and foremost, the adjustments of fifth grades three through six into existing classrooms. We need four classrooms at Robert Frost for that to occur. With that said, those come from one, a sixth-grade classroom next year. Again, this is input from Kirsten Jorgensen as well as Jennifer Hannan and Linda Myers, who helped put this package together, and based upon the enrollment and anticipated enrollment at Robert Frost next year. We also will free up a classroom with the counselor moving from a classroom space to an office space. It frees up a second room. Learning resource staff center move from a classroom to an office space frees up the third classroom. And then the fourth classroom would be freed up by moving music on a temporary, one-year-only basis to the Baptist church next door. That will take some coordination, will take some work by the staff and by the administration of Robert Frost, but there are your four classrooms in order for us to facilitate the existing of third-grade students at Robert Frost School. I think it's a good plan with every intent of minimizing disruption to the school as much as possible to the existing fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. There's no way to get around that. I mean, obviously, there's going to be some additional students in the building, and there's no way to get around the disruption that occurs from that. But I think every effort is and will continue to be made to minimize that disruption as much as possible. So one of my concerns was related to the potential for summer move-ins, and I did do some research related to Robert Frost and have found that just net gain or loss over the course of the last four or five years, that there hasn't been a huge influx of summer move-ins. It happens on occasion, and like I shared with you in the past, I can remember one summer when I was principal at Mark Twain, we had quite a large move-in, but most summers were pretty typical and natural. However, we have to keep that in mind. So with that said, there is an option to free up an additional classroom at Robert Frost if necessary by moving current title services to more of a push-in model at the school, again, for one year, or to use some space in the library for that to occur. I don't believe that's going to be necessary, but if we did have a large move-in over the summer, that may be the case. I wanna share some numbers with you. The current Robert Frost enrollment is 392 students. The anticipated enrollment with third graders is 467 students. That school has had that many students in the past. Anticipated enrollment without third graders next year, simply because we have a very large sixth-grade class moving out and a small second-grade class, or excuse me, third-grade class moving in, is 361 students. So it's an interesting dynamic, and we wouldn't be having this conversation if that dynamic wasn't in place. It wouldn't work if we had 140, 150 kids moving out and 150 kids moving in. It wouldn't be possible. But it is possible under this circumstance. So we've used capacity of buildings in the past, and capacity sometimes is a little misleading because they're all reflective of programming of the school. But the optimum capacity based upon current programming of Robert Frost is about 450 students, which means you can surely cushion that if you needed to with another 20 or 30 students. It's a common practice in schools when necessary. However, you throw a classroom from the Baptist church next door into the mix, and you're talking about the capacity to be able to handle 467 students in the building. So supports to move from Eugene Field to Robert Frost would be four classroom teachers, furnishings, equipment and supplies, a mobile laptop lab, 25 iPads, .4 of a behavioral support specialist, third-grade music instruction would occur, route busting would occur, of course, to take care of the additional needs for the building. District support to Robert Frost is an impact, and I think every time we've had changes like this in the district, around the district, the district has considered options to best support the students and the staff members in the school under the circumstances. So with this, would become an additional full-time educational assistant to support the supervision, recess, student escort to the church, whatever the administration believes is most appropriate use of that person. If overflow classroom is needed, there would be funding for an additional license support. I don't think an overflow classroom is going to be necessary, but then again, we don't know until we see the move-ins that occur over summertime. Again, I believe that's low risk. Food service support would have to be addressed, and we'd have to, we'd need to continue doing that evaluation, but obviously, if you put a net gain of additional 67, 70, 72 students in the building, then there's gonna have to be some impact on food service for that. We need to modify that and support that program. Funding for room changes of teachers and a transition team, and a transition team is something that I really believe we need to lean on, a transition team comprised of licensed staff from Robert Frost, third-grade teachers at Eugene Field, classified staff and administration. That team, assuming that you take action on this tonight, would be convened as soon as possible to work out all the details related to this transition and to get this program in place as effortlessly as possible and hopefully with the least disruption possible. But we have set aside $5,000 that would be used for teacher classroom movement, two days for each teacher, one day to pack up, one day to unpack, custodial maintenance support in order to move their belongings, technology support in order to move items to get them either from Eugene Field to Robert Frost or within Robert Frost itself. In addition, the church, while they are fully cooperative and supportive, they have given indication that there may not be any rental charge for this, and so that still needs to be sorted out. And if there is any cost for that, I'll let you know when we discover that. We've been meeting with some church officials on a couple of occasions over the last week and a half or so, and they are willing players in helping us to make this happen. And then, of course, once the change occurs, we need to be extra attentive to this change in the fall and to monitor closely to see actually how many students arrive, how many students are there, what the impacts are in the building, if there's additional support in order to make it happen. And then, again, relying upon the fact that this is a one-year solution, knowing that grades three, four, and five will be the three grades at Robert Frost School, but next year, the fall of 2016, this proposal makes sense to me, and I believe we can make it work. So I share that with you and put it your way as a discussion item tonight. Also, on the revised agenda, Mr. Chair, we did put this as a potential action item for tonight as well.
Yeah, okay. Okay, discussion on this, board?
Let's have one question. I think the plan sounds pretty good. So if we have, if we're using additional parts of school, possibly using the Baptist church as well, are you also planning on additional janitorial due to additional load at the site?
Yes, I mean, Joel and I have already begun to discuss that, and he hasn't set his full staffing for next year, but it has to be part of the formula.
Okay.
Absolutely, because we'll be responsible for cleaning and taking care of the Baptist church, the one classroom that we've made discussions.
I know we've been kind of around and around on this one for a little while, but the more information we've found out about different options that just brought to light, the more information we still needed to find out. So I wanna thank the administrative team for working on this for quite a while now and putting this together. Like we've said before, we don't have any real ideal solutions, but it sounds like this, to me anyway, this one will probably work for a year. Other discussion? Moving on, resolution authorizing $2.5 million loan for Schleter project. We had a resolution in our packet at our last work session, and this is not an action item tonight. We do not have preliminary cost figures from the architect at this time. I think we're supposed to get those at our work session next week. So we didn't think it was prudent to have this as an action item without knowing the cost figures. So we're gonna wait on that, but this is a chance for any discussion on this, if anybody's looked at the resolution or has anything they wanna say about it.
The only question I had about Tim was, we talked about here, first page at the bottom, the board may determine in future time that all of the portion of the project financed by the agreement may be refinanced by future general obligation bonds if submitted to the voters. Would that money then be subject to, would we be essentially prepaying off the loan and would we be subject to penalties?
Based upon the information from Sharon Capizzo of Columbia Bank is that, using the schedule that she outlined, I think there was, I don't recall it specifically, Tom, 5% after five years, 60, and then it dropped off, 4, 3, 2, 1. Whatever you were responsible for at that point in time, let's say, as an example only, this board were to pursue a bond seven years from now, and seven years from now, for example only. And so at that time, let's say there's four years left on the loan, five years left on the loan, and so you, let's say you have a 3% penalty. Yes, you're obligated to that penalty.
For that.
For that proportion, correct. And then, of course, there's no obligation to include this in a bond, but if this language is not in here, you don't have the option prior to the debt service being completed.
And then we're gonna wait, we're gonna wait for, when are we gonna schedule to do this?
This will possibly be an action item on our June regular session. We'll get cost figures next.
We'll have good figures, sketches, good, an idea of what this project's gonna look like before we authorize the money to do it.
You're gonna have a full report by the architect a week from tonight, which will include, and you're keeping right to the schedule that you've seen all along, Tom, and so I anticipate some conceptual design. I anticipate initial costs. The traffic impact analysis is complete. The report is being generated now. You'll have that preliminary information, so I believe by next Monday, you're gonna have a lot more refinement to these figures than what we've had to this point. Absolutely.
Good. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if I can share as well, I placed something in front of each of you and also at the back table, and this is also on the website, and if the public is interested, please take a look at the website, because we are updating information on there at occasion that, like, as an example, the schedule is updated as of last week. And we also put on here, most recently, a document that discusses the source of revenue to be used to help offset the cost of the debt service. And I'm gonna comment just briefly that you are fortunate, because not every school district can make this claim. You are fortunate in this school district that you, over the last number of years, have generated some revenue and that you've preserved that revenue for use in this district, and that's in your capital funds projects account, long-term capital projects account. And you still have about $1.5 million in there. In fact, as you heard from the Budget Committee meeting the other night when Joel made his presentation, is that a portion of those dollars are gonna be used for the roofing projects that we have to do this summer. You have leaking roofs. The roofs need to be done. They've been on a schedule to be replaced, and everything is in motion for that to occur. So it's nice that you've been very, I think, preparatory over the years in building that fund. Second to that, though, I think an equally smart decision is that this school has assessed the value of your surplus property, your additional property, real estate that you've had, and everything from the sale of the Westfield property to the most recent sale of the Steel Hammer property. You've had some initial conversations about some other property. You've had a little discussion about when Eugene Field is empty, what that looks like. You have, I think, a bit of an opportunity here in that you have a revenue stream. You have, I think, a bit of an opportunity here in that you have a revenue stream available for you to help offset this cost. And getting back to a comment that you made a couple of minutes ago, Tim, I fully agree. I mean, there's no easy solution, including the move of third grade students to Robert Frost, there's no easy solution here for what we have related to facilities and addressing your most pressing need and that's discontinuing the use of Eugene Field School. So this, in my mind, is an appropriate use of dollars, of revenue, that literally minimizes, if not completely eliminates, the need for you to use your general fund and that's the sheet that I'm referring to right here. All totaled, if you take the additional revenue that you have through remaining land sale contracts, your recent sale of the Steel Hammer property, the future construction excise tax revenue, which by the way is a conservative estimate, as well as your lease agreement revenue, which is a conservative estimate, you're at two point three million dollars already. Now, that's short, there's no doubt about it, of the three, a little over three million dollars is necessary for full debt service for this project by the time you count fees and interest. And you aren't going to get a loan without fees and interest. And so with that said, I think you as a board, in the near future, especially related to the potential sale of Eugene Field property, you've had a little conversation about about an acre, or no, about three acres on the north end of the Mark Twain property, you have some additional resources available that does two things. It helps pay this off with minimal impact on the general fund. I think you've heard some rumors and people are saying, oh, this is all coming out of the general fund, that's just flat out false. You have resources available to do it, you also are preserving with this decision one and a half million dollars in your capital funds account that helps pay for things like roofs and other projects across the district. Back to your comment, Tim, there's no perfect solution here and this two and a half million or three million dollars, sure, if it was available for you, could be used for other projects down the road without it out, but you've had two bond attempts and they both fail and you still have an old building sitting down the road that needs to be discontinued. So it's an interesting position to be in, but I believe this is the best option for you under the circumstances right now.
Thanks, Andy. Yeah, this is really helpful, thank you for putting that together because it does show that a lot of those funds are coming from other sources, so. Okay, any other discussion on this one? Okay, administrator and staff reports, Andy?
Yeah, I'll make this fairly brief. Great news, we see for the third year in a row, an OEA Choice Wellness Grant of seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Thank you to the efforts of Marie Traeger, Kirsten Jorgensen and others on the Wellness Committee who put that together and really do quite a nice job of focusing on a variety of wellness opportunities across the district for students and for staff. So kudos to them for that, that's another feather in our cap, that's for sure. You've heard a little bit tonight about the recent Oregon Supreme Court decision related to PERS funding and that that decision based upon the legislation two years ago has been reversed. That's an unfortunate decision, it's the reality of the circumstance and it's one that we have to be, to do our best to address. Those of you that attended the Budget Committee meeting last week, you saw and I encourage the public to read as well, my superintendent message which addresses this fact. Couple of pieces of information that I think are important for you to recognize. Number one, we don't know what the impact will be. We can speculate all we want, but any kind of speculation out there that sounds like it's quotable or sounds like it's factual is just not true at this time. We've heard some rumors everywhere from two and a half to four million dollars for Silver Falls School District and I can tell you, there's no grounding for that anywhere. What I can tell you is when the PERS Board sets the rates for PERS, and again, you have two sets of rates, you have your tier one and your tier two retirement folks and you have officer folks and each of those rates are set in a different capacity and really have, the actual impact on the district has even something to do with the proportion of those potential retirees in your district at the time and it's all done on essentially, or the impact is felt on a district-by-district basis or public entity basis, I should say, even though the rates go across the entire state of Oregon. So with that said, those rates won't be implemented, fully implemented until the two thousand and seventeen, nineteen year, which means that we need to begin thinking about that, but we don't know exactly what the impact is going to be. So similar to the comment that you heard the other night, you do have a budgeted proposal that uses six percent of your reserves as a budgeted line item in the current budget and that if additional revenue comes in, we're hopeful that we can get that up to as high as eight percent, which is what we're used to. And if you recall, back to two thousand and eight, two thousand and seven, when I think we had even larger impact taxes as a result of some PERS concerns across the state of Oregon, you, again, based upon the decisions that you have done as a board over the years, were in a good position to be able to use your reserves to offset the cost and the impact of the PERS decisions. So in this case, I think we're in a good position to do so, I think you have good reserves set up, we need to increase those reserves as much as we can and as we move further into the next year or two for sure, we'll have a better understanding of, number one, whether there'll be any legislation to help impact this again, which I doubt, but second to that, we'll also know what funding for schools would look like to help us offset those. So I use that as a point just of conversation right now, if any of you have any questions related to PERS, but truly, it's very early in this process and to be able to say that the impact is going to be a certain amount of dollars is just premature of best at this time.
Questions for Andy?
Did you want to add anything to that, Scott?
No, I think you said it very well, but yeah, it is just too early to tell what our impact is going to be.
Okay, Scott, financials?
Great, thank you very much. There's, the yellow financial report is in front of you, the operating statement which shows the general fund for the period of three one to three thirty-one is on the first page. Kind of, unless there was questions on that particular page, I wanted to bring your attention more to the general fund by school because we've had the questions as to what the budget balance column really means and I wanted to kind of highlight some of the things there because you can see, this goes through March thirty-first, but you can see that there's a couple of schools that are in brackets, both on the not subject to carryover retention part, the top part and the subject to carryover retention part. What this particular report shows is the adjusted budget amount minus the year-to-date amount minus the encumbrance. And the encumbrance is very often, in a school district, is almost always salaries. It could also be, you know, if a school had made a purchase or opened an open purchase order to buy, say, a thousand dollars worth of goods, but they haven't used all of that, the balance of that PO would be an encumbrance. So when you see like Central Hall, for instance, that has a negative fourteen hundred and forty-six up in the not subject to carryover retention line, that is almost more of a reflection of where they're likely going to finish the year up, simply because you can see that the encumbrance amount, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, is what is projected, mostly in salaries above the line salaries, for that school going all the way through the end of the fiscal year. So as we move forward out of March and then into April and May and June, that encumbrance line goes down, but the year-to-date line goes up typically by almost a similar amount, again, with the exception of maybe those purchases that are coming into fruition when somebody's making a purchase thing. So in this case, we often know that like Mark Twain, for instance, because we budget on the averages, their top line number often goes over because they have a more seasoned staff and so they're typically more expensive. The main thing to remember, though, is where we're down at the bottom and you can see that at eighty-two, eighty-eight percent of our budget, including encumbrances, we're doing pretty well. So I hope that makes sense. I also wanted to highlight something that I found a little bit disturbing and I'm going to make sure that it's corrected for next month. The Eugene Field line has a bracket and you can see that dollar sign is a little off, I'm not quite sure exactly why that was generated, that should be a positive amount because they've spent ninety-six point two five percent of their budget and not a negative amount. I'm not sure how that got in there, but I will correct it. And then your fund balances report is on page three. Is there any questions at all on the financial report? Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer Hannan, Eugene Field.
We have two of our intervention specialists with us tonight. Marie Coxon is our reading specialist at Eugene Field and Jamie Hirsch is our counselor and they are both on our intervention team, which is mainly what we're going to talk about tonight. My district report is on grade level readings for page five and to let you know, our management for that topic is our STAR reading assessment and it is a great program that gives us all kinds of really useful information about where kids are, but we are still learning how to read it, so we don't have an accurate, I mean, we want to throw a number at you of how many kids are on level to date. Some things that we've learned about the STAR assessment that we didn't know is that you really have to sync the test dates and that it doesn't actually tell you if kids are on unless you look at a scale score, which is a different report. It tells you where kids are in relation to all of the other kids in their grade that tested on that date. So that's all worthable, but until we work those kinks out, you won't have accurate information to look at. So I'm going to tell you what we're doing at Eugene Field to ensure that all kids are on level in present standards and homework from now. This is a first grader, if you need translation, it says, "I like to read so, so, so much, I can even feel it." That is one thing I think I will never adjust to, most of my career being spent at the high school and the bell rings at the high school and it's like, oh, class. We literally had three kids scale the fence at Eugene Field today to get into school. So for our attendance goal for the district, our main thing with our parents has been awareness of what the long-term impact of attendance issues are for kids in terms of their academic performance later. We mainly have been having, either Jamie or I will have conferences with parents if we have chronic attendance issues and we at times will provide attendance metaphors. How's that working? Well, we are, last year we were at about a ninety-four percent average and currently this year we're at ninety-two percent, even though we've put a whole lot more effort into it. So I do think with the chronic attendance issues that are not about illness, we're making some great headway. Unfortunately, we've had some really nasty strains of the flu this year that have knocked kids out for a week at a time, teachers as well. So that's just unfortunate. I did think, I was working on this in my office and our kids don't know what that is. They have never seen it, but they don't, they are unaware that that is a problem.
Are you serious?
I believe so.
Yeah, I would believe it.
Why would they? They've never seen it.
Never seen one, yeah.
That is not what a phone looks like in the world.
Wow. Can't put it in your pocket.
No, you cannot. So our other district goal is that a hundred percent of our teachers would be proficient or distinguished in the area of student engagement. So what we're doing for that is really putting that rubric in front of teachers consistently and to look at, instead of assuming that we are, what does that really mean? It means virtually all students are intellectually engaged in challenging content through well-designed learning tasks and activities that require complex thinking by students. That's no joke. That's not kids being busy or kids being on task, that's kids actively engaged in learning. So we're getting better at distinguishing the difference and knowing what that looks like in the classroom. So whereas we would have in our classrooms, back in our day, teacher might have said, who knows the answer to this? And if you would answer, and now the questions our teachers are asking are, what's one way that you could find the answer to this? How do you know that works? What's another way you could find the answer? How do you know that works? It's a whole shift into engaging kids in their learning and it's very awesome to watch. So this is the one we're mainly going to talk about tonight, having a hundred percent of our students on track to graduate. So at Eugene Field, we have a five-strand student growth plan. It includes protecting our instructional time and helping our kids with self-regulation skills, the homeschool connection piece, the literacy program and the early intervention program. For instructional time, we have limited our non-academic activities to one day per month. So if there's a holiday, if there's a birthday, if there's an assembly, if there's a guest speaker, if there's a walking field trip, that all gets put into one day a month celebration day so that the rest of the day instructional minutes are protected. And then every day, we protect our core instruction blocks in reading and math. Nothing can happen during those times. Jamie, our school counselor, Mrs. Carrick, Mrs. B., as the kids call her, runs the mouse stand and there's some examples there, difficult to see, sorry about that, of the kinds of activities that kids do. But in a nutshell, we are running a Building Y PBIS, that's Positive Behavior Intervention Support. She trains all the kids and all the teachers. Mrs. B. sees all, almost five hundred kids every week to teach them skills of functioning in a little community, like a classroom. She does that every kid weekly in guidance. She has kids who have some specific skills that they need to work on, she does small groups with them and then she provides an alternative recess environment for kids who don't yet have the skills to be successful at recess with whistles and galleys and cars and little kids. It's a little like Chuck E. Cheese some days. Anything you want to add on that?
Not the mouse stand outside.
No, the mouse stands lovely. Outside is a little chaos.
I do want to say that it's very exciting to see kids have different choices and opportunities to explore. In the counseling world, we look at four domains and its career, socially, emotional and academic and then even community involvement, but just for them to come into this environment and feel, have that opportunity to explore this is, it's just phenomenal. I invite you to come and watch sometime. They, yes, they love to be outside and we encourage them to be outside, but there's kids that just for their break, for their downtime, for their just regrouping time, they need to, you know, they're choosing to do some other things. So they can go back to the classroom and be revitalized in their different, you know, choice of ways and learn. And so I'm just really excited about that, so age-appropriate for Eugene Field.
Thank you. Our literacy program is run by our literacy tosta and our media specialist in the library. Those two ladies on the bottom right are our librarian and our library assistant. They are dancing with glowing fingers to promote reading. Our, it's a long story. Our theme for the year is superheroes read, so you'll notice in many of our pictures, they're superhero themed. Kids have reading levels that they reach and they get superpower cards that they can wear and on those celebration days, we have literacy celebrations and it is all superhero And then our early intervention systems, we run those in the reading, math and self-regulations. We basically run an RIE schedule like a high school does, but what that looks like in grades one to three is it's a daily. So the remediation is kids who are barely at or slightly below grade level report to Mrs. Coxon's room, it's called MARS, that's Math and Reading Support. Kids just think it's Mars, spaceships and stars on the wall. They report there for skill groups. Our intervention knows, those are ones who are more significantly below grade level and they report to the LRC for an alternate instruction method, so they're going to get the same skills but taught a different way. And then extension, kids who are consistently at or above grade level stay with their classroom teacher for extension opportunities. And teachers have lots of different ways that they do that, but essentially it's reading and writing skills and practice at or above their grade level. So we have, for instance, in one second grade classroom, she's running a book study on eighth grade level books for her second graders. There's so cool opportunities that kids have that they didn't have before to, for the accelerated kiddos. So we love this model. What it looks like in practice is it's a ninety-minute literacy block, the last thirty minutes is RIE. Same thing with math, it's a sixty-minute math block, the last thirty minutes of that, they run RIE. Then our homeschool connection, we, there's a lot of research for homework and against homework, particularly at our age group. So here's where our staff landed. We want our goals for homework to be getting kids to build the habits of academic success, kids and families both really, and that they apply the skills they're learning in the classroom in their work. That solidifies those skills for them. So these are some examples of the homework and it's school-wide by grade level, it's a tic-tac-toe board so kids can pick, depending on what grade you are, how many squares they have to fill in for each week. Here's some examples of the activities that are in those squares. Draw a line and the line segment, explain what the difference is. Parents just sign off in the square that you just explained to me what the difference is. Enter your spelling words in spellingcity.com and take a practice test. Describe how to ride a bike using six of your sequence words. Teach your parent why magnets repel or attract. Make change for one dollar in five different ways. Why are baby animals born mainly in the spring? And that's an inquiry, that's the teach them how to learn part, how would they find that out? So they go Google or they look it up or they ask somebody who knows accessing their resources. The Eugene Field Mouse The Eugene Field mouse is missing, create a lost poster describing it, that's when we're working on describing words. Find the perimeter and area of your bedroom. So those are just examples, they change up each week, but they are taking the skills that the teachers are teaching for grade level and finding ways for kids to apply them in their world. Some successes we've had, we have about eleven percent drop in students performing below grade level standards in reading and math from the fall to now. So pretty significant, and our interventionists are able to pull kids who are at grade level. It is only the kids who are above grade level that are staying for extension. At or below, they're getting some extra support in those areas. And then we've had a fifty percent reduction in special education initial evaluations in our school. And you may recall, that was a discussion a couple of years back, that we were perhaps over-identifying, and I think we have been able to clear that up with some early intervention Questions for us? Wow, you're...
That looks like good stuff.
It is just stuff.
Yeah.
It's good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Hannan, Silverton High School.
No technology coming to you.
She'll have to buy donuts then.
So the district goal of one hundred percent of K-12 students to be on track to graduate, the performance indicator for Silverton High School, for personally me to, to track, was ninety-six percent of our ninth-grade students will earn at least six credits by the end of their freshman year. Since we haven't met the end of the freshman year yet, I took data for tonight from the end of the semester. So ninety-six percent of students being, having earned three credits by the semester. Currently, we are at ninety-two percent, which means twenty-four students of the three-hundred-and-sixteen did not meet the three-credit threshold. And to break that down, six of those students enrolled after second semester began, and they enrolled with zero credits. So of those twenty-four, six did not begin the school year with us. Of the remaining eighteen, nine finished first semester below the three-credit threshold and without additional work will finish below the six-credit goal, and I'll go over those interventions that we're working with those students here in a second. I've personally met with their counselor, and each of those students has a, has a plan to recover their credits and get back on track. Finally, the nine students remaining passed two-point-seven-five credits, and they can earn three-point-two-five in a semester, so if they earn all of their credits second semester, they'll be at the six-credit threshold. That would put us right at the ninety-six percent threshold, and that's not including in these other students that I mentioned earlier. The interventions that we're using with these students, obviously regular parent communication and counselor meetings with, with all of these students, meetings with myself and other administrators, online remediation, referral to our student support team, entrance into Mrs. Dresser's after-school homework club, a very popular intervention, by the way, referral to our alternative ed program, referral to our credit recovery program, RIE requests, and additional IEP meetings if appropriate. Moving on to, every student will attend ninety-five percent or more school days. If you recall, when I presented in the fall, that's an area at the high school, we have a long ways to go. Last year, fifty percent of our students met that threshold. After making it an emphasis this year and putting a lot of time and effort into increasing that, we're currently at forty-nine percent. So we have long ways to go to improve that and to someday reach that ninety-five percent threshold. Interventions include regular newsletters and parent conferences, letters home, daily phone calls, phone calls by advisory group teachers, classroom teachers and administration, counselor meetings, home visits. We've tried rewards, and if all else fails, we place students on attendance contracts. And then finally, one hundred percent of our teachers will be proficient or distinguished. In the district standard for student engagement, we will be determining that, and I'll have better information for you next fall, but we'll be determining that at the final summative evaluation meeting with all of our teachers, and we'll have some data for you after, after the end of the year for that. I'd like to end tonight with some additional two thousand and fourteen, fifteen data that I think is worth noting. During the school year, our football team played in state championship, taking second. Our dance team took second in state. Our boys' basketball team won the state championship. Our girls' basketball team took sixth at state. Our speech team won the district championship. Our band won the district championship and qualified for the upcoming state event. Our choir qualified for state and placed a student third in the state soloist event. Our FBLA chapter was named five A chapter of the year and qualified seven students for nationals. Our FFA program hosted the state convention and recently qualified nine students for nationals. This past winter, our student body raised over six thousand dollars for the Tree of Giving. Recently, our student body raised over twenty thousand dollars for Medical Teams International. And finally, one hundred and fifty-one students currently call Silverton High School home even though they reside outside the Silver Falls School District. So in light of the recent criticism of this district, and specifically the leadership of the folks to my right, I wanted to end with some positive data tonight. Thank you. Questions?
That's a good year.
That's a great year.
That's a great year. I think so, too.
We do have a question about, about the interventions for both credit and attendance. Generally speaking, have you been getting reasonable support from parents that you've talked to?
Yeah, high school obviously is a little different because if you look at the elementary school numbers, they're a lot closer to that threshold than we are. That's not an excuse, we can improve by a long shot. And I think, I think parents need to be aware that, you know, every day that students are out of class, that's one less day that they have of instruction, and at the high school level, the stakes are really high. So that, we need to do a better job of informing them, and we've talked about some possibilities if, if we were to potentially end up with an SRO back in the school, how we could utilize them in communicating with families, maybe an attendance officer, we used to have an attendance officer, in fact, that was one of my jobs back in the nineties, and it was, it was effective. So I think there's some things, Wally, that we can do better. It's, it's certainly a team effort, and we encourage parents to help us out with that.
Other questions for Mark?
No.
Mark, could you, that list of the, could you even email that to Denise, Denise, so she could get it to all of us?
You bet.
I'd like to have that, thank you.
All right. Thanks, folks.
Thank you, Mark. Any board reports tonight? No correspondence other than emails and?
You have everything I've received.
Okay. Second audience with visitors, would anyone like to address the board? Okay, we'll move along to action items. First one, approve Arrow Roofing and Sheet Metal of Portland as contractor for roofing replacement projects at Victor Point School, Mark Twain School, Bus Barn, and Roof Coating Project of Phase One portion of Silverton High School in the amount of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars, and eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollar bid alternate for addition of roof insulation at Victor, excuse me, at Victor Point School pending approval of the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen district budget. Is there a motion? Move for approval?
Second.
Moving in second, and any discussion?
Yeah, I, I got a quick one. I was, I came here, I was going to vote no, because I believe there should be competition in law states that, that there should be a separation between the person who writes specs and the person who gets the product, and that's ORS two seven nine B point two ten. But, so, sorry Dale, but the reason I'm going to vote yes on is because of what Mr. Davis said. We issued him an intent to award, which is pretty important. He's made plans to work, and I think it might, I think we could be liable because of that. And I hadn't, I, in my, all my visiting and calling around, I heard that was pretty important, but I didn't, I hadn't been, I didn't realize that we had issued, had issued that, so, yeah, so that's on me. Yes.
I'd like to point out one other thing as well, that the range in bids was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the material costs that we're talking about here is only about sixty-eight thousand. It's pretty unlikely, even if we were out, didn't even go out to rebid this for some reason, it would come back with lower cost.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I, I might just say that, you know, I, this is kind of like any good court case in that when you hear one side of the story, and when you initially hear, particularly the plaintiff's side, because they send out the first salvo, you know, it, it often looks one way. As a matter of fact, anytime I talk to my kids about a dispute, it usually looks that way, too. And so I appreciate all of the effort that everybody put into this, and I think that looking at the full picture, you know, I want to say, you know, I appreciate the job that Joel did on this, I feel like he did a great job. I think in asking him questions, certainly don't mean any disrespect by that, that's part of our job, is to oversee staff, and I think he did a nice job, and I did appreciate hearing everybody else who came in and testified to help us understand the full story. And in looking at, you know, the invitation to bid that was sent out and comparing that to with lot, to lots of the other ones that I've seen in my professional life, I, I think that it was very good, and, and I would say that the Taylor Metals people, I, I don't feel that that was fairly presented, you know, their side, but that's their side, so we got it all, and I'm strongly in support of awarding.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, all in favor, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. And just for the benefit of the public, I know through this process, there's been some talk about, about this whole process, and I think that's something that we're going to briefly talk about at our work session next week, that the board is going to possibly work with the, not possibly, we're going to work with the administration on reviewing that, just to make sure everything's in line with what it, how we feel it should be. Okay, second action item, approve Connell Construction and Demolition Corporation of Sandy as contractor for demolition and deconstruction of former Ag Industrial Arts Building on the Slater Street campus in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, third one, cast vote for Tracy Bowler as Zone Three representative on the Willamette Education Services District Board of Directors. Is there a motion?
I can tell you a little bit about her.
Oh, go ahead.
That'd be terrific, please.
This is something, just for the public, this is something that we do as a whole board, that people run for the board positions, and we...
She does have children attending Reed Creek School, she's very supportive of all the educational programs, and is really tuned into the special ed programs, so I would see her as a very positive person on the board.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to cast the vote for Tracy Bowler?
Sure, I'll move to, to elect Tracy.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and our last action item, consideration of moving third-grade students from Eugene Field School to Robert Frost School beginning the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year. Is there, excuse me, is there a motion?
I'll move that for approval.
I, this one...
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? All in second.
This is just in consideration, this isn't a done deal by voting for this this evening.
No, this would be a done deal.
We're moving.
Yeah. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Julie, Julia opposed, yeah, yeah. Okay, that concludes our regular session, we're going to take a little break and then go into executive session under ORS one nine two six six oh, sick leave bank requests. Thank you for coming, everyone.